Good morning, everybody, and welcome. This is the regular business meeting of the Mason County Commission for February 27, 2024. We're going to go ahead and begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, man, okay.
All you have to do is say aye and we'll get with it.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trapp.
I'm here.
Next up is item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. Is there any correspondence and organizational business come before us today?
A United States Congressman Derek Comer sent a letter supporting the expansion of sewer line to Puget Sound Industrial Center in Bremerton. Jameson Harris, manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs for Comcast, announced the Federal Communication Commission will end federal funding for the Affordable Connectivity Program as early as April. Greg Bartol sent in a letter requesting marijuana grow operations be only allowed in industrial areas of Mason County. Correspondence was received regarding short-term rentals being considered as businesses. Homes First sent in their annual report for 2024. Raleigh Watts, Kate Evans, Joseph and Patricia Sennett, Mary Sennett, Lisa and Bill Herney, and Brent and Jamie Sennett sent in letters requesting the Washington State Department of Natural Resources Harske and Flats Timber Sale be canceled. And the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: liquor license renewal applications, notice of liquor license application, liquor license approval for bucks per mercantile, and special occasion liquor license.
Any other correspondence or organizational business to come before us?
There is not.
Wasn't there supposed to be a announcement for the press for a position from Ian?
SWAC.
So, I asked for March 12.
He asked for that go off March 12?
Yes.
Okay, then no wonder what the hurry was yesterday. You had to get it on there, that's huge. Okay, thank you. Then we're going to go ahead and we're going to move forward. Next up is your open forum for citizens' input. This is the opportunity for citizens to talk on issues that are not on the agenda. Some of the stuff that you're here for today is on the agenda, so this would not be the time for that. But if you have something you'd like to talk to the commission or the community about that is not on the agenda today, this would be your opportunity. We'd ask you to raise your hand, we'd call on you at that time. We'd have you come up to the podium, and you'll be allowed up to three minutes to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda, and then we'll give the people out in Zoom land the opportunity to do the same if they choose. With that being said, 15 minutes is a total lot for everybody, so please be brief if you can. Is there anybody inside the room who would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? Please, come forward. If you don't mind, I say your name and perhaps where you're from.
Dean Jewitt, lifelong Mason County member. Love our community. Appreciate the time to be here. I just wanted to read, this is my first time here. I go to a lot of other school boards, city councils, so it's my first time in front of you guys, I appreciate it. I came across a mission statement. The mission of Mason County Government is to provide essential and mandated services which will preserve and benefit, and this is where it goes, health and safety and welfare of the general public in a professional and courtesy manner through the effective and equitable management of available public resources. So, kind of what I wanted to hit on is the general public and the safety and the welfare. It's no secret that I have a heartfelt affection for our community, and when I see negative behavior, it really, it irritates me, makes me mad, and then it makes me sad. A lot of the things I'm talking about, and people throw around the homeless word, I typically don't like to use the word homeless. Homeless is an individual, in my mind, PTSD, running away from domestic violence, situation where they're using the resources that we have available to lift themselves out of a quagmire and become a positive impact on our community. Okay? Now, there's another subset of people that I do not appreciate, and that is what I call the street people thug, people that make decisions over and over and over. People might say that they're a mistake. A mistake that's made multiple times is a choice. Okay? And so, when we have things like what's going on above the yacht club that's been going on for years, we've had opportunities to clean that, we've had permission to clean that, so I'm just concerned and curious as to why it's allowed to continue to happen over and over and over again. It's a disgrace, it's an embarrassment, and it can very easily be rectified and corrected. There's also a campground that sprung up just off the West Deegan Road, and there's probably many of them that I don't know about, but those are three major ones. There was quite a few of us in leadership that took a walk down the railroad tracks, and what you can't see is way more than what you can see. We live on Hammer's Leonlet, and I noticed a bunch of garbage floating by my house. I'm thinking, oh geez, what's going on? Is there a king tide? Well, geez, if you take a look at the garbage that's spilling off the hillside there that we've seen, and you see bottles and bags and stuff floating around, that's not just a camp that somebody that a king tide got. That's, I mean, to me, that's blatant. I found out that a five-gallon bucket of feces can make inactive 13 acres of tideland. So, how much feces do we have just pouring into our waterways?
Your three minutes is up, but you could wrap it up.
I need like six more minutes. So, anyway, then the other thing I just wanted to touch on real quick is the Airbnb thing that we've been talking about. We already have a lot of rules and regulations in government that oversee and take a look a lot at those, so I have some really strong feelings on that, but thank you for your time.
And thank you for coming. You're welcome to come back, too. We'll accept you here, we appreciate you, thank you. Is there anybody else inside the room that has an item they'd like to talk to, talk to us about that is not on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Seeing none, is there anybody out in Zoom land that has anything they'd like to discuss with the commission that is not on the agenda? If so, go ahead and raise your hand. If not, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, I see Ken has, and just please announce, Ken, who you are and where you're from if you want to speak.
Good morning, commissioners, Ken Van Busker from Belfair. Just wanted to let you folks know, I attended the kickoff PAC meeting for the comp plan update last night, and I was pleased to see members of the League of Women Voters there as well as other members of the public, and I think that public engagement's going to be key to success for this update. I did note that there were several members of the commission that were attending via Zoom, and that the chat function was utilized during the meeting, and for those people at the, public at the meeting, they couldn't really see that, and I thought the county had established a policy about that, but the PAC might want to look at that if that is the case. I also attended a Port of Allen meeting last week in which the port approved Mason County Commissioner Nethland to accompany Port Commissioner Sheridan to open a safety deposit box, and it seemed a bit odd as the board executive director had suggested that he should accompany, but regardless, I wonder if Commissioner Nethland could share what was discovered during your board calendar input or report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Is there anybody else out in Zoom land that would like to talk to us about an issue that is not on the agenda? Ken, you raised your hand back up again, were you not finished or?
Sorry.
That's okay. Anybody else out in Zoom land? Okay, one more time, anybody in the room? Hearing none, we are going to go ahead and move forward with the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. For the adoption of the agenda as presented, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is item number seven, which is our approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the February 5, 2024 briefing minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded, that we approve the February 5, 2024 briefing minutes as presented. Any comments or polls? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so next up is our approval of our action agenda. The items on the action agenda will be read to the public and put into the record. After we read everything into the record, you'll be given an opportunity to ask a question that may help you to take it off, if you want to take it off for a separate vote, so that you can comment on it, or so that you can hear what we have to say about it, or make us have a vote publicly separately for it. You'll be given that opportunity at the time. But first, we'll read it into the record, and then we will reach out to you and see if you would like to pull it off, or anybody on the commission would like to. With that being said, I'll read item number 8.1 through 8.3. Commissioner Trapp, if you wouldn't mind reading 8.4 through 8.6, and then Commissioner Schutte, 8.7 through 8.9. Okay, item number 8.1, approval of warrants and treasurer's electronic remittance claims clearing fund warrants number 8102789 through 8103112. The amount, $2,687,499.80. Item number 8.2, approval to appoint Jens Dieter Stammer and Karen Rice to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the SWAC, for three-year terms expiring February 27, 2027. Item number 8.3, approval to add the budget amendments for treatment sales tax, TST, transfers from 2023 into the 2024 budget. $20,104 for mental health, fund number 164, to the clerk's office, and $157,259 for mental health, fund number 164, to Office of Public Defense.
Item 8.4, approval for the chair to sign the amendment to the Blake Reimbursement Agreement with the Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts for a maximum amount of $591,739. Item 8.5, approval for the county administrator to sign the service contract with Mendoza's Texas-style food for concessions at the Mason County Recreational Area Park for an additional three years to expire at the end of the 2026 season. Item 8.6, approval to appoint Heather Kennedy to the Mason County Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board for a four-year term expiring February 27, 2028.
Item 8.7, approval of the resolution amending the Mason County Personnel Policy, removing section 5.13 career incentive policy. Item 8.8, approval to post and advertise the Public Works wastewater manager position, and approval of the resolution instituting a $5,000 recruitment bonus to be distributed as $2,500 upon hire and $2,500 upon successful completion of the first year of employment. And item 8.9, approval of the resolution imposing the two-tenths of 1% sales and use tax for 911 emergency communication systems and facilities.
Now that these items have been read into the record, it will be your opportunity now to ask a question, if you have one, to help you make up your mind on whether you want to take it off for a separate vote. If you have a question regarding any of this, right now is your time. Please raise your hand and I'll call on you. No questions? Is there anybody in Zoom land that has any questions that would help them to decide whether to take an item off for a separate vote? If so, unmute yourself and say your name. Hearing none, commissioners, are there any items you'd like to take off for a separate vote? Is there anybody in the audience who would like an item taken off for a separate vote so they could talk about it or hear any opinions or see a vote? Seeing none, is there anybody in Zoom land that would like an item taken off for a separate vote for a specific conversation or be able to testify? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve items 8.1 through 8.9 as written.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. For the approval of the action agenda, items 8.1 through 8.9 as presented, any discussion or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just want to just reiterate, item 8.9 was a measure passed by the voters of Mason County at the February 13 election to expand funding for our MaceCon Dispatch Center. I think it came in at 67%, and so just appreciate the community stepping up to support our dispatchers. We have a lot of, we have a lot of needs in terms of radio equipment. We have kind of had that conversation yesterday with the sheriff's office about needs that they have, and so this gives us an opportunity to hopefully recruit and retain dispatchers so that when we all need to use 911, in the event that we do need to use 911, they're there and available, and so the board will get to work on that. Our sheriff is a member of the board, Kelly Frazier in his other capacity is a member of the board, and just really grateful to the board for stepping up and working on this issue.
Any comments?
Yeah, just to, real quick, just think, those people that volunteer to be on our committees, they're thankless committees, but we sure appreciate their help.
And that's where we get our direct input, other than being on the streets with everybody, is by citizens stepping up. So, if you ever see an open position, this is how you can be in front of some of the issues instead of coming to testify after they're already done. So, if you'd like an opportunity, we'd love for you to put your name out there, and we'd love to recognize you and bring you forward for future discussions. With that being said, again, thank you to all those people that stepped up. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up, we're going to move into other business, department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to talk at this time? Go ahead, Mark.
Just wanted to let the public know, I've received a couple of comments on what is the process for determining whether we're going to develop regulations over short-term rentals. That's coming back to the board in April, so if you want to go online, you can look back at our workshop that we had with the board where information was presented about the results that we got back from our survey. There were some examples that were provided to the commissioners about how other jurisdictions have implemented regulations regarding short-term rentals. I've asked the commissioners to individually provide feedback to staff so that when we come back in early April to have another briefing item on it, we can actually discuss how Mason County wants to move forward. Separate topic, I attended the Planning Advisory Commission meeting last night. Comprehensive plan updates are a big thing, so I'm glad to hear that we have public that are attending virtually and staying informed about that process. I think that our commission that we have in place is very detail-oriented, really looking at the information that's been presented to them and asking some great questions. So, there's opportunities for the public to get involved there, and there'll be a number of workshops that are outlined in the plan. Just please pay attention to when those are coming up and attend and provide feedback.
And on that, just a comment on the video conferencing and using of the chat, the commission in their meetings have decided during the briefings not to have chat open at all because it becomes a clandestine communication that not all of us may see, and it may screw up on how we are doing business. We never passed it with a regulation on the planning, but it still may be something we need to talk about because it's, I could see how that could go if they're in the room and they're not watching the chat because they don't have access to it. That's not probably a good way to do it, so forcing people to speak at the time instead of doing it through chat might be something, but we never passed anything that I know of in regards to the Planning Commission. So, in regards to Ken's question on that. And on the vacation, that'll be my honor, so I want to remind you, we still meet with the, anyway, aside from everything else. I know that you and I had a conversation. I know we're all open to having those conversations with all the individuals, people that live here or have businesses here. So, you can do it in those many different ways. Are there any other elected officials or department heads who would like to speak at this time? Kelly, please come on up.
Good morning, Kelly Frazier, Mason County Facilities Manager. I am just here to tell you, March 11, we are going to be dedicating the Building 10 to the Gary Paul Brunson Building at 1 o'clock. So, just for you to put that on your calendars, and I don't know if you're going to be here, but yeah, they're going to bring the paper, they're going to bring all kinds of stuff over that, so just appreciate if somebody, one or two, you can show up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other elected officials or department heads who would like to speak at this time? Please let us know in the room. Are there any elected officials or department heads on Zoom that would like to speak? If so, please either raise your hand or unmute yourself and say your name. Hearing none, we will go ahead, and we're going to move into item number 10, which is our public hearing. We're going to open a public hearing to consider updating Mason County Code Chapter 3.17 for gambling tax, and to consider lowering the gambling tax rate from 5% to 3%. Staff? Not staff. That's what it says, so, Madam Treasurer, if you don't mind. Get me in trouble.
I actually did bring staff with me today, so I have Tracy here in the room. She needs to ask any questions. She's the one who manages the program collections portion in my office, so welcome to Tracy. I'm Lisa Frazier, the Mason County Treasurer, and the question was brought before me as to whether or not we should decrease the gambling tax rate from 5% to 3% to match Kitsap County. So, in reviewing the current ordinance, it became apparent that the ordinance needed several updates, and so we, I took that on and made some updates to the ordinance, and that is here before you this morning for a public hearing.
Thank you. Is there, now, this is an opportunity for those in the room and for the commission, I'm going to ask the commissioner first. They'll be given an opportunity to ask questions in regards to the actual presentation that was just given, but if you want to testify, you'll be given an opportunity to testify during another piece of the hearing. So, with that, Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Just a quick question. Madam Treasurer, do you know what Thurston County's rate is?
It is 5%.
It is 5, okay.
Any questions? Okay. Are there any questions in the audience for staff in regards to the presentation that was just given? Again, you'll be given an opportunity to testify. Seeing none, is there anybody out in Zoom that would like to ask a question in regards to the presentation from Madam Treasurer? Hearing none, then we will close that part of this, and we will move into testimony. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. At this time, this will be your opportunity to stand up and let your opinions and your concerns and stuff be known regarding this issue, so if you would like to speak, I ask you first inside the room to raise your hand, we will call on you, and we'll ask you to come to the podium, because if not, Dietrich will be throwing stuff at us because that's where the mic is, and that's where the cameras are set up for. So, with that being said, is there anybody who would like to testify today? Please, come up and tell us who you are and perhaps where you're from, and if you don't mind, if you have a business, let us know that, too.
Okay, first, my name is Bonnevier Casey. I'm from Belfair. My husband and I own Casey's Bar and Grill. Although I talk to people daily on a regular basis, and I don't do this very often, so I'm extremely nervous, just so you know. I'd also like to point out, although Thurston is 5%, Pierce is 2%, and Graves Harbor is 2.5%. Kitsap, at one time, the city of Bremerton was 3.5, whereas all of Kitsap was 3, so they, the city of Bremerton had gone before the commissioners and asked for there to be, for it to be the same. Anyways, so, my husband and I bought Casey's Bar and Grill 11 years ago, it was Zen Bobble Loops, and since that time, the minimum wage has more than doubled along with all the costs that go with it, whether that's unemployment, LNI, cost of goods, all of those things. Pull tabs are meant to be, it's called a commercial stimulant license, so it's meant to stimulate our, the economy and the establishment's economy. It's becoming very difficult to sustain all of the different things that we have to pay, all the taxes, all the, I'm really stuttering now and I'm getting very nervous. I had it so dialed in so beautifully, and it was eloquent. Anyway, so we're just really asking that maybe we could be more on board with our surrounding communities. I tried, my husband and I tried really hard to find out what Thurston's was, it was kind of like a blow when I heard 5%. But, as I stated, Pierce is 2%, Kitsap is 3%, Graves Harbor is 2.5 on the gross, and I'm just asking that we can be more comparable with the surrounding counties, and I also think that that would help to encourage fellow business owners to maybe look into getting pull tabs, which would provide more taxes. We brought a friend with us who is looking, he owns a tavern, who is looking into getting pull tabs, and we've been discussing all the things that go with it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Please, come forward, if you don't mind, say your name, perhaps where you're from or your business, and...
My name is Tim Masbrook, and I own Ben Pine Brewing Company in Belfair, Washington. Since I've been looking into getting pull tabs at our establishment, I've been talking to other bar owners in town and listening to some of the concerns and some of the benefits of it, and ways of operating it, of course, and I was surprised to hear that Mason County had one of the highest rates around, of course, now, other than Thurston County, which, who knows, maybe being that this is meant to be a stimulant for the businesses, maybe us coming into line will help them to come into line more with all of the other surrounding counties that are around. Can you imagine a county such as Pierce is massive, not, maybe not geographically, but massive population-wise compared to Mason County, and they can do it with a lower rate? I don't see why we can't do it for a lower rate here as well. Reason I'm looking into doing the pull tabs is that I understand it, it's a nice little boost for the business. We operate on a shoestring, we were, right now, we've been since we've opened, right at the edge of like me putting more money into the business. Sometimes we'll have some good months in the summer, but we opened right before COVID, you know, so we, we kind of just hit everything along the way. So, we're looking at the pull tabs as a way to boost our company's economy and to also be able to continue to offer what we do offer to the community, a location, excuse me, I'm trying to speak fast, a location that we can host charity events, other community interest events, working with the library and some of the things for elder folks, working with the hub and some different programs and stuff like that to help different demographics in our community. So, I believe that lowering this rate to a more manageable level will be beneficial for all of us.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify at this time? Please, come forward.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Bronson. My business partner and I own Taylor Station Restaurant and Lounge in Mason County. I want to thank you for doing all the research, really appreciate that, because I just heard about this meeting last week, but I wanted to come in and give my support, and also just reiterate what Gwen said. It would, it means a lot to small businesses to have a 2% decrease in taxes. It means another cook, it means a dishwasher, it means another server on so that we can better service our customers. There are so many reasons that I could stand here and list as to increased prices for customers. It's a big deal, and it would be so appreciated if you guys would take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify on this issue? Anybody else in the room? Seeing none, is there anybody in Zoom that would like to testify on this issue? If you would, please raise your hand, or if you don't know how to do that, you're welcome now to unmute yourself and say your name, and I will call on you. Anybody in Zoom who would like to testify on this issue? Hearing none, no more in the room, then I will close public testimony, and we will move on to commissioner deliberations. Anybody want to speak? Start?
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
Oh, maybe, go ahead, I'll...
I was just going to ask if we knew what Shelton's tax was.
I did not look at the city of Shelton, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Do you, can you walk us through a little bit about what the state process on this is for what they collect on this and what their, the application process or anything like, or maybe would be more appropriate for...
I can tell you from the treasurer's standpoint, this is one of the hardest billing and collections that we have for the few businesses that we have, because we have very little communication with the state on who is doing business and when they're doing business, and communications with us. So, part of the, part of the ordinance change is to have those new businesses that start provide us with a copy of their gambling license, and so that we'll have more, be more able to track and know who's doing business and who's not doing business. So, it's a very difficult one for us to track. I don't know what they pay to the state, you know, the business owners would be able better to tell you, the state doesn't share that information with us, so it's very difficult. We currently have... six businesses in Mason County that are currently doing pull tabs. Revenue for these pull tabs goes to Mason County Sheriff's Department, current expense. And a decrease in the tax would lower their annual revenue by about $35,000 annually, so. But the ordinance itself just puts into place some better tracking and, and collection as well for the treasurer's office.
Thank you.
Mark, can you let us know what you found out?
I can't. It appears from this website that Section 3.4 gambling tax for Shelton is set at 5% based upon the gross income received. But it says for conducting of any card room or social card game. Is that pull tabs?
Different license.
Different license?
Yeah.
How about bingo and raffle?
Different. So it's pull tabs and punchboards. Yeah, this is what it is. And every city has different rates that they apply.
Well, then, so we also pay taxes. We also pay taxes to the DOR. We also have to pay our yearly license fee to the gambling commission. They also want a percentage of your quarterly.
And we also have to pay the IRS.
We also have to pay the IRS.
I need to wait to hold off for one second.
I think that's actually what I was, I mean, I appreciate your information so much too. But I think that's what I was interested in, just kind of what, how does this get divvied up to all the other?
I was going to, I should, I knew I should have printed. Do you mind if I come up? I'll let you look at. I have.
Well, we need you to to tell us from back there, I think, because that's where all the cameras are and stuff.
It's, I was just going to let you look at a couple PDFs that I have.
Sure.
If you would like to take my phone, there's some PDFs in here from the
I won't send anything.
Sorry, excuse my shaky hands. So that's like the first quarter. I had, I knew I should have printed all of that stuff.
So is that all the different?
There's all the different, I have a ton of PDFs in there for my account and showing the various things that
And we don't usually ask the citizens to bring all the stuff for us, so you did find.
Perfect.
I was able to verify that it, for operation of punchboards and pull tabs,
There we go.
it is 5% based on gross income received in, in the city of Shelton.
So now, as, any other comments I've come to, so before we make, make a motion. I see this, first of all, thank you, Madam Treasurer, for all the work you and your staff did to put this back together again. Apparently, there was a lot that needed to be changed and to bring it.
Kitten County's ordinance was very helpful, so this very closely matches theirs.
Is that where you got it?
Yes.
So, and with that being said, although there is a reduction in revenue, to be able to keep these businesses and help them go, I think it's important to continue. And with the idea that others may pick it up, especially with streamlining of the process and a lower rate, it makes it a little easier perhaps for new ones to come on. So I'm hoping that we will support this, but I'll leave it to the commission now for more discussion or a motion.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. So I appreciate everybody coming down today. I know that, you know, small business owners, you'd probably be happier to be working today and not down here at a commission meeting. So I do appreciate you making the trip over here. I do have a couple of concerns about lowering the rate and I just want to be honest about that. I don't know where the commission is going to fall on it today, but I do want to express a couple of my, my concerns about it. First and foremost, as the treasurer mentioned, this is money that goes right into the general fund and, and supports our sheriff's office and law enforcement. And so I, I want to be aware of that when we make this decision because I think we are in a community that supports and values law enforcement and public safety. Dean's comments earlier today seem to reflect that as well. And so my mind is always on, on that. And so we generate roughly $100,000 a year off of this, this tax. And that does, that does, that's about one sheriff's deputy. And so when we're, we're cutting from that, we have to pull from somewhere else in order to be able to fund those positions. The other side of that is what we have done for the past four years is we've not taken our constitutional 1% to increase property taxes. That also would generate about $100,000 a year to the general fund. And, and, and so we have to have this balance where we're offsetting, where we're taking, you know, receiving taxes and not receiving taxes. And so the commission has been, I think, very conscious of those realities too and not trying to pile on when other, other taxing agencies in our community have taken their 1%. Look at the state, what they do with their share of the property tax, so on and so forth. Over the past four years of not taking that property tax, we've, we've not collected roughly $400,000 worth of money that would go into the general fund to support other functions like law enforcement as well. So while I, I'm certainly sympathetic to what we're hearing, I, I don't know that at this point I can support reducing this without having a bigger conversation about what we do to help support those functions in the general fund up to and including the 1% property tax. So I want to be honest with you. I do appreciate what you, what you said today and sympathetic to it, but trying to balance all that out.
Yep. Mark and I had a good conversation this morning. We looked at the state site to see where the gambling tax monies go. They were supposed to go to schools. And I'm sure that there's a lot of chuggles going on right now. What was it? It was, it was 200 and, 253,000, right?
200 million goes to school-related things. And there's an additional 50, 52 million that goes to the general fund and the state.
Right. So think of what that money could do for our schools. Where it was supposed to go. My concern is the same as Commissioner Shute's that I just found out. Was the sheriff's office. And how do we, how do we help? How do we keep our sheriff's office going and also help you guys at the, at the same time? I've been to all three bars and restaurants and love all three of them. I think you guys do an amazing job. And so if we, so if we went down, so Thurston County's at 5%. Pierce, what did you say Pierce was at?
Pierce is at, and I'd like one more opportunity here to then just help me if I have the
I can't, I'm sorry.
Pierce is at 2% and Graves Harbor is at 2.5.
Two and a half, okay. And Shelton's at 5%. Kitsap's at 3%. I'm wondering, I know 1% is not much, but if we, instead of doing a 3%, if we went to 4%? I'm not, I'm not quick at math and I don't, well, I have a calculator right here, but I'm wondering how much?
We'll figure it out in 35, you're looking at 17.
17? And a 35 doesn't, a reduction of 35% or 35,000? I don't know, I would feel more comfortable if we went to 4% because there's other things coming too. We've got our jail coming. We've got, I mean, things we're going to have to change, we're going to have to work on. We've got more mandates coming down from the state so far this morning. It's not looking good for counties at this legislative level.
Before we make a motion, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, go for it because maybe I can work some more things out in my head.
One of the things I want to mind, although, yes, it, it does go to the general fund to be used within the sheriff's department. It's still our general fund, no matter how you look at it, of which we've done exceptionally well. We haven't had to take our 1% for all these years because we have. I know that I've had that conversation, you know, and it, it's never a pleasing thing just to hear, but we've had so much money in the bank these days that we need to either give back or we need to provide more services. This is a situation where this is an opportunity to give back, where it may end up generating more revenues in the long run from other people climbing on. But being able to give back to these businesses to help them to generate more money and bring in more money, I think is a good way to spend that additional 35,000. And again, it, it isn't going to make a difference because we don't even take the time, we do our budget to talk about exactly each part of revenue that comes in for the sheriff's department when we do it. We just set it up to where this is what they need, this is where we're at, and then we provide whatever revenue is a shortfall. Because that little bit of money that comes in this is nowhere near the, what are we up to, 17 million dollars now? So that, that's nowhere near the 17 million or have any type of major effect on that. We just decide that it comes out of the general fund a little bit more up to that amount. But if another business or two businesses come on, that may even shorten that down. So the simplicity of being the 3% the same as Kitsap and the ones that are around them seems beneficial. I'd be, I'd be very appreciative if it was at least 4%, but it seems to me that 3% would be more realistic, especially since we copied everything else from Kitsap. We might as well copy the rest of it. But I would entertain a motion however you want to do it.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
And, and then I'll probably, probably have a motion. So you, you do not have tabs yet? Pull tabs?
At the brewery?
Right.
Nope, we're in the process of filling the forms and gathering the information. There's also very complicated.
It's a very long process.
Well, hopefully it's a little simpler once you put together.
But you can see just the existence of these businesses in themselves. We're not funding the police department. Like Randy was saying, the police department's a conglomerate. They get money from the general fund. Our little tiny, whatever it's going to be, $35,000 difference in the general fund is a, is a stack.
Well, that's the six reasons.
Well, I got to be careful because I want to have our questions answered, but we don't want to be testifying at this time.
Yeah.
So my apologies, folks, we're past that point. But if, if she has a question, she's, she's able to ask you directly as, as Commissioner.
Great, there you go. All right, well, I do have a motion. I would move that we approve the changes to the county code, Chapter 3.17, establishing the gambling tax rate for punchboards and pull tabs at 3%. Oh, and changing the amount to 3%.
Okay, I will second. Uh, first, so we have a motion and a second. I'm going to, because she did it off the cuff, to accept the changes as presented by the treasurer with the inclusion of lowering the rate to 3%. Is that, did I understand that motion correctly?
It wasn't exact, but it was close.
Okay. With that being said, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more conversation regarding the issue?
Just, I, I respect the motion and the discussion today and I kind of stated my opinion on it and appreciate the opportunity to have you guys weigh in on it, so thank you.
It's an honorable opinion either which way it goes, so I, I, you know, it's hard, be hard to be mad at anybody for, for that. So with that being, anything further?
Thank you guys for coming in. And thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, Lisa.
And your amazing staff.
I do have an amazing staff.
I still have, I still have to vote, I still have to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries. The hearing is closed. So with that, we're going to go ahead and go back to our regular agenda. Next up is Board Calendars and Reports. Commissioner Shute, if you don't mind starting this off, I'll question Traska myself.
Thank you. Yeah, going forward today, we have a utility, we have a utility rate workshop that we're going to be doing. And then I have a meeting up in Bremerton that I'm going to be attending. And then tomorrow, Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Just a note there, Dean, it'd be great if, you know, there's another opportunity for a public comment at our monthly Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. That's our citizens advisory board that advises the county on how to utilize our homelessness funds and what we're doing about housing and mental health and all that stuff, so.
When was that?
It's 9:00 AM tomorrow. It's, it's via Zoom. The information's on the website, so. But it's, just like I said, another venue for you to, to talk about it and hear some of the discussions that are happening in that realm. Also have a Thurston-Mason Behavioral Health ASO meeting in the afternoon. Big behavioral health day tomorrow. Excited to do a listening session at Shelton High School with Public Health with, with Ben from our prevention work group. So it'd be great to hear from students and that kind of thing. Looking ahead, briefings, WASAC Virtual Assembly, Chart of Accounts redesign meeting with the IT, IT Steering Committee. Have a MaceCom Labor Negotiation pre-meeting, as well as a MaceCom Supervisor Meeting. Legislative Virtual Updates on the 8th, Briefings on the 11th, Mason Crisis Services System of Care Workshop, and then my bi-weekly check-in with BH ASO staff ahead of our next meeting on the 12th.
All right, aye. Well, next we have our Utility Rate Workshop. Have a Shelton Youth Connection Mardi Gras Gala check-in, so that's coming up soon. SWAC meeting tomorrow, meeting with some constituents. And then a Turning Point Board meeting, LSC Roundtable meeting, LSC meeting, Public Works Broadband meeting, a Public Works Executive Committee meeting. We're having a pre-permit meeting that's with staff and with the EDC to see how we can improve our services. Briefing on Monday, WASAC Virtual Assembly. And then I'm going on vacation. And so super excited about that one. But I'll probably be zooming in for a couple of the meetings. Not sure which ones, so don't count on me for anything until I get back on the, late on the 21st.
Okay, I want to touch on a couple of things. First, Commissioner Traska, you know, because we had citizens that came and talked about those. I want to thank you for doing the walk that you did. You went out through those on the tracks. I understand from the sheriff that one of the issues that we had in regards to that is they're waiting to try and get some type of permission from the railroad before they can trespass people and stuff like that. So I want to share that. I'm wondering if the commission would be okay within a very near future of putting on the agenda, perhaps maybe we wait till you come back, put it on the agenda, a half an hour to 45-minute discussion on options of things that we have and what we're looking at in regards to that?
Steps, steps that we've taken and steps.
Yep. And then if we need to have a workshop to actually do something further, you know, or if we see opportunities to. But this one here would be informational and, would you guys be comfortable with that? Okay, Mark, if you can make that happen and just for the public, just so you know, we have those. That's not for public to have input. It's a, a work session, basically, through our briefings with, with the commissions themselves. But if we do further, there'll be further opportunities and you're always welcome to speak at the podium when it's on the agenda as well. I got to cover some of the stuff the last few weeks because Ken did ask a question about it. So we had a, our bypass meeting with State Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority, Rotary, Peninsula, Transportation Organization, several different meetings within the organization of the Port of Allen. Not necessarily Port of Allen meetings, been meeting with them before individually, going over the books and the budgets and trying to help them put their little pieces back together. Again, it looks very good, it's very, very strong. There's some good things that are coming forward. During that process, there was a discussion where they found they had a, a safety deposit box. And it's kind of weird because most organizations don't have a safety deposit box. And the commission didn't know they had a safety deposit box, from what I'm understanding. So with that, they started looking at how to do it and how to access it. And I was asked unofficially at one point if I would accompany a commissioner when they went to do it. And I said I would. I have not done it yet. I don't have a date set up. From what I understood, even the key they had wasn't actually the key, so they got to figure out how to do that. So I don't have something for my calendar on when or how that would occur. I'm waiting for them to tell me, but I do have things, meetings coming up with them during this week in regards to other issues such as the budget again and putting their pieces back together. Those conversations may come, come up during that time. But again, most of those are with the, the director, the interim director with citizens and with one commissioner at a time. So with that, we have our Utility Rate Workshop, which I'm looking forward to to figure out. Rotary, uh, school facilities, Port of Allen in different fashions, Law Enforcement and Firefighters Boards. Let's see, school, let's see, school facilities, I think I already had that one. That will bring us back and we'll do these things all over again. So with that being said, is there anything further from the commission?
Yeah, Commissioner, so on the Port of Allen, just, I know that the Port of Shelton had reached out and was interested in your offer. and you were offered to, to help out with the Port of Allen. Do you have any idea where those conversations are, or...
Again, I'm speaking just from what I've seen, not from them direct, but at this point, the first thing that had to be done before they could even ask for help is to put pieces together and make sure they have all the information. For the public that doesn't know, their director had passed away unexpectedly, and then they put in an interim, "who passed away." And with that, they had to reconcile and been reconciling the books, putting everything back together again, because they were trying to find out even what debts there were, because every aspect of it kind of disappeared. So right now, they don't have anything to ask of them. But I do know that they did reach out. The fire departments also reached out, and there's others that have reached out to try and work with them, and it's going exceptionally well. I believe that within the next few weeks, they're gonna have a reconcile of books and a new budget that will reflect on everything that, that they have coming in, everything that they'll, they'll be doing, and finishing up with the water system and all that other.
And then just to be clear, that you're, you're doing this as a courtesy to them, not on, not on behalf of the county or...
Nope, I, I am a citizen, but I'm also a past commissioner. I was a commissioner at the Port of Allen for six years. And so with that, I'm definitely not representing the county. And the meetings that I have gone to, I've always made that extremely clear. And especially during the public meeting, I can't speak for the commission in any way. I'm just Randy Devlin. That happens to live. Yeah, get thrown a rock at the building.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Is there anything further?
I just have one, one comment. I wanted to thank Mark and Dean for walking with me on the tracks. It was, it was quite, quite interesting, and I appreciate Dean, what you're doing for the community. You have a passion and a love for this community. A lot of people don't see it, but you do. They, they might see it a different way, but I, I appreciate it and look forward to working more in resolving some of the issues or many of the issues that we have.
Yeah, if you don't stand up, who will? Anything further?
Up to me. Move adjourned.
I'll second.
And as a move, the second that we adjourn, no objection? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.